I'll call the meeting to order today is, well, it's a regular meeting of the Board of Selectment. It's the 7th of October, and we're meeting by Zoom. It's 7:30, and Mr. Siri is now joining us. Hi, Mr. Siri.
Yeah, I'm, we'll see how long I can stay on here.
Okay.
I've been with and without power for a little bit.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, we'll move quickly. There is an additional agenda item we'd like to add on, which is executive session after the selectmen's response before we adjourn. Is there a motion to that effect? And this is for...
This is Kevin Siri. I'll move to add an executive session for the purpose of real estate, discussing real estate matters for the agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's seconded. So is that like 6D, we'll call it. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. The delegations. Anybody in from the public who'd like to speak to the Board of Selectmen this evening on any item, please either raise your hand, identify yourself, unmute yourself using star six, use the chat room, jump up and down. Anyone at all from the public? We have some people in here from the public this evening that you could join us. Anyone like to speak? Okay. There's also an opportunity at the end of the meeting to speak, so please, you know, send a chat at the chat feature or unmute yourself and be ready as we do encourage the public to speak at the beginning of our meetings and at the end of our meetings. So I'll move on. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 16th.
Move to approve as submitted, Kevin Siri.
Second, Mark Salerno.
Salerno seconds. Any comments, corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So we had the regular meeting motion and seconded, but the special meeting, September 21st.
Move to approve the minutes of the special meeting of September 21st as submitted, Kevin Siri.
Second.
And Mrs. Okay, sorry. Mrs. Hardy. Any comments, any corrections? All in favor say aye. If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Um, Mark, I'm a generator. I just gotta run, do something real quick. I'm gonna mute myself. I'll be right back.
Okay. You mute yourself and someone else can make the motion on the consent calendar.
Move to approve all items on the consent calendar for October 7th.
Thank you.
I'll second.
And we have a second. And was that Dan? That's great. Any comments, corrections? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay. New business, special appropriation, human resources. Becky is our human resource coordinator. She's here this evening. If you, she's identified as Becky's iPhone. If you see her on the screen, that's who it is. If you haven't had a chance to meet Becky, she's doing an awesome job. And frankly, in this day and age where, you know, the litigious society we live in and all the complications dealing with the multiple unions in town and even the non-affiliated folks, and putting that all together, Becky's been instrumental in a lifeline for the town. I'll also say that, you know, especially during this period of time with COVID, with all that's gone on with that and some issues with that, we've, we're happy to have had Becky. The issue is that we need a few more hours a week. We put in for that in our budget. It was one of the cuts, but we have proven that we need it. Anna or Becky, if you want to add to that before we put a motion on the table, I appreciate some more insight on where we are with your position, Becky.
Thanks for those kind words, Mark. Hi to everyone tonight. Mark, you really summarized it all. It's really a volume workload thing. Probably the big thing is because of the age of our employees, we've had a really uptick in retirements, which, you know, takes some time, along with some terminations, which causes us to have to do a lot of new hires and that. So that's a big thing. As Mark mentioned, the COVID is very time consuming and resource driven. And then again, as Mark mentioned, all the personnel and policy issues dealing with the unions and non-affiliated are probably the top three things. There's an attachment with lots more detail. Feel free to, you know, review it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Great. Are there any questions? We're asking for appropriation from, I believe, our contingency. Is that correct?
Hi, this is Kevin Siri. I'll move to approve a special appropriation and transfer in the amount of $3,576.18 from account number 01-01-120-200-500 contingency to account 01-01-106-100-211, HR manager, to allow for up to an additional three hours per week and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. This request comes during the fiscal year due to workload.
Second.
Motion's been made and has been seconded. Are there any other comments?
I remember, I remember we spent quite a bit of time discussing this during the previous budget session, and unfortunately, it was an item that we decided we had to eliminate, but it wasn't our original budget. We spent quite a bit of time. We heard the rationale for it at that time, and I think the need for that has increased even more since we had our budget discussions at the beginning of the year. So I'll be supporting this.
Thank you, Roseanne. Mr. Salerno, did you?
Yeah, is this a one-time thing or is this to bring hours up for?
We're looking to bring hours up. We're with the amount of employees we have and the complexity of the landscape, not just during COVID, that has certainly highlighted it. We think it warrants a full-time position, an HR position in our town with retirements, with benefits, with personnel issues. We've kept Becky quite busy. And let me tell you, when she doesn't work on Friday, we miss her and we need her.
So this is already a full-time position. It's just increasing hours by three. So benefits don't change?
Benefits are already there.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Again, Becky's here. She reports direct to the first selectmen's office originally way back when. Anna was responsible for HR and people who worked piecemeal HR. Becky and I have been working close together, again, with our labor attorney and various bargaining unit residents and groups. It's been working out pretty good. If not, I'll call the vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, so unanimous vote. Becky, thank you for all you do for the town of Eastline and for the employees, our valued employees that work for Eastline.
Welcome.
The next item on our agenda is, well, it's been presented to you a little incorrectly. I'd like to correct it, but this does surround the $327,000 and some change on the FEMA funding that was held back by Board of Finance. They saw, they thought in a COVID world that we live in, that we know we're gonna have some added expenses at the end of the year and the uncertainty that's out there, they pulled money out of what we were trying to put in for the Public Safety Building. So you remember, we approved a $1.5 million advancement and reduced to $1.2 million. And again, this is rough. I'm using rounded numbers. So that difference, we want to place, it would be being presented to you as some of the suggestions that the Board of Finance had come up with. My suggestion is different, and my suggestion, I think you'll agree when you hear, that we should put it into the contingency fund. And as need comes up through this year, and should this year pass, the fiscal year pass, we can always advance that money into next year's budget. We have, we have things going on in our town. We have, you know, of course, the Board of Ed is getting budget issues over there, but we might also have some other issues, and you'll hear some more about that later in my report. We want to put it where it belongs, and that is the contingency, and use it as needed. I think putting it away for, you know, sidewalk repair is a nice idea, but this is, again, a year we might need that money today for a need, not a desire or want. Other things like town projects, future projects that was brought up, body cameras, that is something that's gonna come up this year, but we don't have an exact number. There's some grants, grant funding available, et cetera. We want to put this money, again, into the contingency so that when the police do come to us and the Police Commission come to us saying, "We need this amount of money for body cameras for the purpose of fulfilling the Police Accountability Act that was passed in the state of Connecticut", we'll have the money put away for. So I'm hoping that you support this by putting the money into contingency to be used at a later date for a purpose. And as you know, when money goes to contingency, when it comes out, it has to be appropriated. So we will look at it again as the needs come up for very specific needs in Board of Finance and a town meeting, if appropriate, would be had.
Mark, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Do we have, do we have any idea how the Board of Ed's doing with COVID, and are there gonna be cost increases that they're gonna be requesting?
They're not doing well as far as, I mean, they're projected to be, we've had meetings with them. I think they reported to the Board of Finance a month ago that they're about $1.6 million over budget right now.
At this time, or they're projecting $1.6?
I said the projection.
Oh.
Most of their added expenses have already come and gone, PPE, extra cleaning, and the, you know, sneeze shields throughout the schools and all that. So I think, you know, they've reduced some of their costs as well through the pares and the, some of the transportation costs, but I think they're projecting a 1.6, and that number, I think, has risen a little bit since. We are getting some money back from the state. That doesn't include that. So there'll be state money coming back, but I think we need...
That was on the order of 350? Was that, the state was giving us 300?
Yeah, somewhere in there. Maybe it was four or five. Anna, do you remember the number by chance?
You know what? I, to be honest, I don't quite have it because there were so many different components to the total picture.
Yeah.
But what the board, what the board has been presenting is what they're estimating their worst-case scenario to be in terms of the outlays.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, yeah, that's a big, that's a big cost coming up, and we'll have to figure out along with the Board of Finance on how to cover those costs as they come up.
Mark, we know that with the police accountability bill, we're probably, we're gonna need the cameras at some point.
That's correct.
But we also know, and I know from talking to the chief, a lot of the expenses is not necessarily in the hardware. It's, well, we're gonna have hardware in the cars. I gotta match the hardware in the bodies, and there's also gonna be some maintenance costs, someone to manage all this data. So we know that's coming. Do we know the deadline that the state's gonna impose on us for the cameras?
I'll bring Mike Maisik into the conversation, soon to be Lieutenant Maisik, by the way, and we'll make that formal announcement and have a ceremony when it's appropriate. But Mike, you're here tonight. Do you want to just kind of roll through the body camera issue and the police accountability for us?
Right. So the chief and I have met with three vendors already. We're gonna be presenting to the Board, or to the Police Commission tomorrow night. Mark, as you stated, there, you know, there is a cost between the body camera for the person, the equipment for the vehicle, and of course, the, you know, cloud-based storage and/or server-based storage. So we are looking at all those options. Again, that'll be presented tomorrow night. The state has given us until 2022. I know the chief has been in contact with OPM, and, you know, they have a certain amount of money that is available for kickbacks to the towns, but it's, I believe it's gone from about a 50% reimbursement to a 30% reimbursement for total project. And again, that's about all I can, I think, throw out there right now.
Right. But you're right, Mark. Mr. Salerno, when you, when you talk about future costs, it's not just the hardware. What you'll see in the budget going forward is software costs, the storage costs, the cost of doing these, and then, you know, replacement costs. These things will get damaged. These things will, they'll be under warranty for a period of years, but then there'll be this ongoing capital cost of, you know, every several years, we'll have to update them or have a replacement plan in place. And those are things we'll have to talk about in the future.
So I want this follow-up started. Is there a, is it a fixed pool of money that, like, the first, all the towns that applied first will get the amount of money, or is it guaranteed up through 2020? In other words, is this something that's gotta be done sooner than later to get some reimbursement?
That's absolutely 100% correct. It is a, almost like a first come, first served, yes.
Okay. That's useful to know. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll only make a statement. I think the four items that were originally discussed, I had the pleasure of being at the Board of Finance meeting, and they all have merit. But based on some unknowns, no final cost for the body cams, any other, any other requirements coming out of the recently passed Police Act, I think it is prudent to put the money aside until we get better definition and we can, you know, present them not only to ourselves but to the citizens of Eastline and prioritize how, what we should be spending this additional money on. So I support putting it into the contingency fund pending additional information going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Daigle. Thank you for enduring some of those meetings as well.
My pleasure.
In the end, any other comments?
Okay, Kevin Siri, I'll make a motion then. I'll move to approve a special appropriation of the remaining FEMA funding received from Storms Irene and Sandy in the amount of $327,046.72 to account number 01-01-120-200-500 contingency and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. This resolution is passed under the guidance of Executive Order 7, Sierra, with no town meeting and being less than 1% of the current budget.
Siri? Salerno seconds it. Any further comment on this move? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Mike Maisik, I didn't know you'd be here tonight. Thanks for coming. I know body cameras was on the agenda, and please know that money's there. So if Police Commission comes up with a plan, the town will be ready to support that, or at least we'll be able to put it on our agenda to discuss the point.
Right. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you all. Next on our agenda is discussion of possible action, the PSB appointing Noble Construction. That's, basically, I'm asking for approval, I think the motion will say it that way.
Yeah.
Approval for the first selectman to enter into the contract with our low bidder, which was Noble Construction, who is just days away from swinging hammers.
Okay, this is Kevin Siri. I'll move to approve the contract between Noble Construction and the Town of Eastline for work to be done at the Public Safety Building located at 277 West Bain Street, Nyannick, and to authorize the first selectman to execute any and all documents necessary. This contract has been reviewed as to form and to execution.
Second, Paul Daigle.
Second. I want to make mention, we've had our town attorneys review the construction package, the contract. Our architects have also reviewed, and we have some very solid advice and people watching over our interests as a town. So I feel very confident moving forward with the, with the contract. And again, their contract is to start, like, immediately. It's 327 days that would take us out to about September 1st next year. It takes that many days. Maybe there'll be some time savings in there, and we're hopeful for that. Some efficiencies, we found, but that's where we're at on that. Any questions about the contract part and my, my being authorized to sign on behalf of the town?
Yes, I have a question. For the Chair of the Town Building Committee, who I understand is online with us tonight.
Yes.
I would like to know if there is an independent clerk of the works that's included in that contract?
There is. There is. We worked that out through the Vision Committee, and Ray is working with, is gonna work with the clerk of the works to make that work out. Ray, do you want to add anything to that? You're still muted, Ray, if you are there.
Yeah, who would hire the clerk of the works? Only had the Bill Cornelius in mind?
Yes.
Would the Board of Selectmen or the Building Committee hire him?
First selectman.
Okay, fine.
Yeah. So we do have a clerk of the works as well. He's a town resident, man of industry, has done this kind of work before, and will come, was a member of the Vision Committee, so he's happy to serve the town in yet another capacity.
Is the cost that was in the budget?
Yes. There's, it was in, the cost of the clerk of the works was in the budget. I think we've agreed to a lower price term, and so we'll have some money left over in case there's a need to bring an IT professional in as we finalize the IT portion of it, but Bill's willing to work at a discounted rate.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, great. I'll make mention, I don't think I need to officially do this, but Paul Daigle and Mark Salerno have agreed to switch some ex officio responsibilities around. Then Paul will be the ex officio to the Building Committee as he was the Chair of the Vision Committee, so he can see the project all the way through, and he'll work with Ray and he'll work with Bill Cornelius to finish this project as intended to. In exchange, Mark Salerno's agreed to do all the other committees in town.
Can we have a discussion on that, please?
There's, there's a couple nights where he has three meetings on the same night, so good luck, Mark.
Mark, I do have, I do have a question, Mark. Can it be more than one ex officio assigned to the Building Committee?
Yes.
As long as it's not a quorum, you could have two people there.
Right. I'd like to not do a switch. Mark and I have spoke. I'll hang on to what I have, and if I have a conflict with any of the meetings of the Building Committee, Mark will be able to be there. He's agreed, keep his too, so we'll both serve in that capacity and make sure we support the Building Committee as they go execute the project.
I'm good with that, as long as we have some coverage from the Board of Selectmen, of course, Paul, you'd be instrumental in that. So I appreciate you guys working together on that. Next on the agenda is 2D, discussion of possible action on the Public Safety Building, appointing the Town Building Committee to oversee the project. It's a formality. We have a Town Building Committee. These folks have been quite busy over the years. Ray, we've benefited from your expertise, your knowledge, your dedication to the town, and we're gonna call on you one more time for a, for a very important project. So thank you for your willingness to serve, and I think there's a motion to appoint you as, well, your committee to oversee this project.
Okay, this is Kevin Siri, and I'll make my motion. Move to appoint that Town Building Committee to oversee the construction and renovation of the Public Safety Building project.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. While we're, while we're in this spot, Ray, you're here. You've taken some time to join us. Do you want to, do you want to jump in and just say hi and give us your thoughts? And you're muted.
Well, it's been a long time coming, and I want to thank Paul and the Vision Committee for their, for their work and their patience. And I don't know if I could have done it. He went through a lot, and I hope, hopefully can bring it in on time and under budget.
Yes, yes. Well, I know we have a crack, you have a crack committee there. You're stacked with great people who are from industry. They want to serve the town, and I think you leaned onto them pretty heavy during the school construction project, which was successful three ways. And this will seem like, oh, this will be nothing for you, you know? A couple million dollars, not a $38 million rebuilding project. This should be, you should be able to do this in your sleep, right, Ray?
No problem.
Okay. I appreciate your service to the town, sir.
Yeah, we have a, on the 15th, we're having a kickoff meeting with the architect and contractor in a committee. Committee really hasn't been familiarized with the project, so hopefully this will get them up to speed.
Good, good. I'll be there. Our ex officios will be there, and I know the architect and the builder and all that will be there. So your kickoff meeting is next Thursday, I think it is. So thank you again, Ray, and to your committee for the service that you provide our town. Very, very important projects, and I know your heart's in the right place. Thank you. We have a motion on the table. Are there any other comments?
Mark, question. The Building Commission, when we did the school, we added members from the Board of Ed to it, and it was like a school building committee, and it consisted of the members of the Building Commission plus the members of the Board of Ed. Do we want to do something similar here or want to just keep it to pure Building Commission?
We talked about it a little bit, Mark. It was my opinion that with you, now you too, but with Paul coming in as ex officio, you didn't need to be a voting member. I think the school projects tend to be a little different because it is their building versus a town building. I think, I think it would be well-covered by the Building Committee. I've seen them in action, a project years ago, maybe it was the, maybe it was the Public Works Building that, when I served as ex officio. These folks know what they're doing. I think you two watching over and helping to guide them through any of the political stuff, any of the government stuff will be sufficient enough.
Would it be worth to have an ex officio from the Police Commission or somebody invited to these meetings?
The meetings are open. You bring up a very good idea. Well, first of all, staff's invited, so I would expect, well, the Chief, Chief Finkelman will be invited to these meetings. He'll be on the invite list to come in and give expertise, and, you know, he has a big portion of this in the IT budget part. You bring up a good point of asking Dan or somebody on the Police Commission to either sit on as ex officio or at least be there present. Listen, these are small meetings. These are usually roundtable meetings, and members of the public would be encouraged to be there. So I will put that invitation out to Dan and just being there to answer any questions that might come up.
Okay. Thanks.
Are we, is the, is the meeting being broadcast on your big screen way up on the wall? Because it looks like you're staring at the ceiling all night. The optics on.
I know. It looks like I'm looking up.
It's okay.
I'm standing looking at the little TV, little computer anywhere.
All right, so let's call, let's call a motion. We have a motion on the table. All in favor of the Town Building Committee overseeing this project, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Is there anyone that think they can do it better than Ray O'Connor? I don't think so. He's our guy. So, thank you all. We'll move right to Communications. I don't believe there are any communications in your packets, or therefore, ex officio reports. Does anyone have an ex officio report? I'll let you fight for the microphone.
Mark's in Rick meets tomorrow night, so I have nothing.
Hi, Dan Cunningham. I attended the Historic Properties Commission meeting last night, and it was at the, at the barn at the Brookside Farm, and they are very focused on getting additional grants for the various buildings that they are responsible for overseeing, and so they're quite engaged in that. And with respect to Samuel Smith Farmstead, they are, they're working on, you know, gardens to produce produce to share with... gardens to produce produce to share with places that need it, that are distributing the produce to those that are in need right now, particularly with the COVID crisis. So, it was a good meeting, and they're, they're very engaged in moving forward with the, with the houses that they are responsible for.
Well, they're working, the Samuel Smith Group, I'll add to that, they're working with Gary Geishel to, you remember, we talked about matching grants in our budget, right? So we gave them money. If they went out and got a grant, and all the grants are matching these days, then we would match them money, and it's in their budget already. It might be in our capital, wherever it is. And they are working to submit that grant, I think momentarily, if it hasn't been put in already. Gary Geishel is helping them. If you haven't been out to the Farmstead, Samuel Smith, it's, it's looking great. They're changing the color of the property. It's beautiful, the back side and the, I guess, maybe the west side has been painted red, colonial red. It's, it looks, it looks awesome. So this, this grant that they're looking to get is for the roof that has a bow in it, and to repair that, and they're, they're doing great things, and I'm very, very impressed. I'm very, very happy with the progress that they are making. They're, they're putting.
Yeah, they, they really are. If they can get that roof replaced with that grant, that's going to be a wonderful thing.
Home run.
Very, very important to preserve that property in that way, so. Yeah, that's the minute. They're, they're really moving fast forward now, getting that grant, it sounds to me.
Yeah, sounds great.
Yep. Gary was very helpful last night. He addressed the, the Commission last night and gave them a status of where things are at, so they're lucky to have his help, so it's good things.
Thank you. Well, Paul Daigle, any ex officio?
Haven't had any meetings since our last meeting.
Okay, Mr. Solerno?
I think we already talked about Building Commission, Planning Commission that last night. They have a public hearing that was continued. They also have a referral on affordable housing to zoning, which they are going to discuss at the next meeting. And they are busy at work tonight. Their subcommittee for the POCD taking all our comments in. So they took good notes, and I think they appreciated our comments, so.
Good, good. And Roseanne, I think you're still out there, right?
Yes, I am. I'm out there. So I don't have an ex officio, but I would like to give a shout out to our registrars and town clerk for running a very smooth referendum. And under difficult circumstances, perhaps not as difficult as our next round, but I think it was a good prelude to what we need to do in order to handle the absentee ballots, and I commend both the registrars, town clerk, and the town clerk staff. And also a shout out to the over 2,000 residents of our town who went out to vote and express their opinions. I know that some of them didn't end up being particularly happy with the outcome, but I think it's very encouraging that over 2,000 people came out to vote. So I feel that we did get a good representation from the community. That's it.
Thank you, Roseanne. Always, always well said. I much appreciate your, your insight, because you have a long history of seeing referendums and projects come and go. And I appreciate that. You're absolutely right, 2,300 people came out. That's more than the first police building referendum, and that's far more than we had for our $38 million school project. So it was an emotional vote, and I'm happy to report we're moving on, and we're building a police building that's appropriate. And I'll echo what you said. I, I, I made a strong note of gratitude to all the poll workers on behalf of the town, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen that evening, and then put a message out there as well on social media. You know, these are difficult circumstances, and these folks stepped up and said, we'll get it done, and they did. And it was a long day. It's always a long day for these folks. I get some sad news to report. There's two big trees. There's one big tree in particular, right in front of the town hall. In front, in fact, the town hall's walkway goes around it. You know that, right by our front doors. And that tree needs to come down. It's rotted on the inside. We've lost several large branches. Some have come very close to hitting the building, which would have done damage to the building. They need to come down, and we are, we've posted their removal, the tree warden has, and we're going to see those trees taken down before the winter season starts. You know, I, there's, there's that one particular tree that's going to be much older than the town itself. You know, here when Indians roamed, roamed the shores of Niantic. It's sad, but this happens to the big old trees, and, and it's, it's, when you take a look at it, you'll, you'll understand that it's, it's time for it to come down. So, we'll plant some trees in their place, and it will also open up the front of the building a little bit. You know, that, there's always that silver lining, I suppose, right?
Well, Mark, as you know, I'm always interested in the history of things, and I think it's incumbent upon you to get out there when that tree comes down and count the tree rings and verify just how old that tree is.
I was going to climb the tree and, and stay up there and try to save the tree. And then I realized the cold weather's coming, so, listen, it's, it's, we all, the, the town went above and beyond to save that tree and built the town hall around it. Literally. And I'm sure at some point you can fill me in on how that all worked out, Roseanne, and maybe some history there. But I'll let you know the date that it might be coming down. If I find out, if y'all want to come out, I don't know, take a picture with it or something. I will, I will leave the tree, the ring counting to maybe, oh, I don't know, a nature class over at the high school or something. Serious note, COVID is doubling and tripling itself in our area very dramatically. It has been for the last four to six weeks. The spike is real. The trend is definitely on the rise. You all have heard about incidences at the school. We heard today that the high school will be closed for two weeks. Mr. Newton is trying to keep especially the younger, the elementary schools open, because he knows those are the kids that, you know, can't stay home alone and, and really need that teacher interaction. But he's doing everything he can. Unfortunately, I don't think people are doing everything they can. I, I know of a lot of house parties, parents socializing, kids socializing. Some of our ball fields have had games, and organizations use our ball fields, and the coaches aren't wearing masks, and, and the patrons aren't wearing masks, and the parents aren't wearing masks. We're, we're spiking because of some of this behavior. We're all tired of it. There's definitely a COVID fatigue, but we'll be putting a message out on, on the town website, on Facebook and social media pages to please, you know, step it up. You know, we all know, you got to wear a mask, you got to stay six feet apart, you got to wash your hands 20 times a day and, and all that, but honestly, I think everyone's a little tired. I'm sure the parents are tired of saying no to their teenage kids, getting together with friends, but this is causing what's going on in our community. Southeastern Connecticut is, is ground zero for the COVID spike in Connecticut. It's not happening on the other side, like we watched Fairfield County struggle in February, March, and April. It's, it's here, and, and the cases are going way up. I had a meeting with Department of Public Health on Saturday. They had an emergency meeting. Imagine asking the, all the chief elected officials to show up on a Saturday afternoon at 4 o'clock to discuss this. It's that serious. And we had a council of government meeting today, talking about the same. We're discussing rollbacks. You know, we've opened up the town hall, we've opened up ball fields, we've opened up restaurants and all these other things, but on the municipal side, there's discussion among many of the towns of closing town halls again, or by appointment only, or limiting access. Maybe it's just the clerk's office, because we are at a time of election, and that's an important touch point, if you will, but stopping people there. It's that serious, and we're watching the numbers, and I think if the trend continues, I think 10 to 14 days from now, we'll be in a state where we're sending our employees home to work from home, that we'll be closing the town hall to outsiders, and closing ball fields. I think most of the baseball, softball is probably done this weekend. It's Columbus Day, and it's getting colder, but we're going to be asking the league presidents and the adults in these, in these, at these events to step it up. And, and it's, listen, we, we all talked about the spike, and we talked about a second wave. It's here, and we're very concerned about it. We're concerned about some of our employees who have shown symptoms and have had to get tests. We have some employees where spouses have had a positive result. So we're working through our employment stuff. We talked about Becky and how busy she's been in human resources. This is some of the stuff we're dealing with, and there's no easy answer. You know, all the answers contradict one another. What do you do when an employee or the spouse of an employee tests positive, but the employee doesn't show any signs? Do you keep them out of work? Do you have them go get a test and have them come back? If the test takes five days to come back, do you have them come into work until he gets the negative result? A lot of contradictions in the law, so we, we work through it one case at a time. We're doing our best. I know you know that. But I'm very, very concerned. I'm putting that out there, and please spread that message as selectmen in our town. Please spread that message. It's spiking. And guess what? East Line is not looking good. I mean, Norwich and New London are really struggling with it. East Line's right behind there. We have a lot of cases in this town, so hopefully people will learn and step it up.
Mark, yesterday's positivity rate exceeded 4% for New London County, which is higher than it's ever been, I believe.
Yes, it's higher. It's quadruple where it had hovered in the summer. And what we're seeing is every week, we're seeing a doubling or a tripling of the numbers. So that trend has to be stopped immediately.
You know, Mark, I think I remember, you know, I think my, you know, son Chris, you know, at lunch I had said that way back to the beginning of this, there was a thought that New London County would be the last place to spike, and they thought it would come earlier, but it looks like it sadly finally might be here.
Yes. Definitely stuff is happening. We have to step it up, and we have to send some messages out there. We also have to protect our employees. We have to protect the patrons that come into town hall and other facilities. The public works facility's been locked down. I believe the fire station's been locked down. Only essential personnel, only people who are actually working are allowed in, so. And we're going on and on. We'll see about the library. We'll see about the, the community center and other places as well as things develop. I'll keep you apprised of the situation.
Mark, the governor, I believe, has authorized businesses to refuse service to customers who come in or try to come in without wearing a mask. Have you heard anything from the governor's office about authorizing police to break up large gatherings, even if they were on private property?
The governor did pass an executive order a couple weeks ago. I think we talked about it a little bit, that it was an executive order with not a lot of teeth, like will people actually be prosecuted for this? The police, the police are, you know, are trying their best to help out in this situation, but they're, they're not the COVID police either. They have other things to do. But yes, if this is a large gathering, we want people to call our dispatch and let them know, and by all means, the police will, will be dispatched to the scene. And there has been.
I had heard that the governor's council was considering that any prop, any parties that had a gathering of over 40 or 50, that the, he was authorizing at the state level police to break up the gatherings. I assume, you know, peacefully requesting that they be broke, that participants leave. So I was just wondering if through the council of government you'd heard anything more detailed?
Again, there was an executive order to authorize the police and the First Selectmen or chief elected officials to enforce the governor's orders, which will include gatherings of a certain size, inside, outside, all that. And of course, you know, didn't have a lot of details. They have since come up with some details on how the police could write people up and fine them, and there are fines involved. So, yes, they, by all means, we'll encourage people to, you know, uphold the law. It is the law as an executive order, and we'll ask our police to try to maintain that peace as well.
Okay. And on that same note, I know that last year you took a lot of heat for canceling Halloween, on again, off again, but I think this is already the second week of October, and if there's going to be a decision made for that, that people ought to be notified as soon as possible. That is the recommendation. We have it, or it'll be left up to individuals. But I think following last year, which wasn't as bad as this year, I think if you're going to make a decision, then you ought to make it before people spend $50 on buying candy to hand out.
Right. So you had to bring that up, Roseanne, huh? You had to put that, no, it's, it's, it is what it is. You'll all remember that there was a big storm that came, and it came a couple hours later, and we didn't have school on the, on the 1st of November as a result of that storm. It was dangerous. It was, it was delayed, unfortunately. Well, fortunately, nobody got hurt, that I know of. There is some information coming out of the governor's office on Halloween. They're suggesting no trick or trunks. They're suggesting, you know, it's not a good scene to go house to house. I will post that, and we're, I'm waiting. You know, it's the 7th of October. We have three full weeks before we get close to that holiday. I don't think anything should be done, you know, outside of 10 days away. Let's see what happens. If this spike continues, I think it's going to be an easy answer. If, if this thing levels off, or this was a blip in the, in the, in the timeline, the measure of COVID in the area, then we'll have some other things. There is, there is something that comes out of the governor's office, I think from the Department of Health, that is a do and a don't and never and maybes, and we'll, we'll work through that. And yeah, something we'll have to consider on town, town level. We will put some communication out there. If we end up allowing trick or treating, which some people say it's not my power to do that, to disallow it, we would encourage people to, you know, turn their lights off if they're not participating, and by all means, it should be understood by those who are trying to participate in festivities. More later on that, Roseanne, I promise you.
Okay.
Thanks for bringing that up. 800 customers without power as we sit here. Kevin's one of them, I think.
No, actually, mine came back, but.
Yours came back?
Yeah, because the generator kicked off a little bit ago.
Okay. I'm getting notifications from Eversource and our Emergency Management Director that, and team, that we have some people out of power in East Line, and they're working to restore that. And that was a pretty wicked little wind thing that came up a couple hours ago. I was in an Eversource meeting today with Chief Finkelstein as, acting as our Emergency Management Director to give feedback over the last storm. It was not a, it was not a serene meeting. It was not one where we patted them on the back and said, we know you'll try harder next time. The communication was pretty direct and pretty frank, and it was, it was pretty spot on, and we really hammered home the need for better communication and having a team of workers assigned to the town so that we could work in, in partnership with Eversource to get the arteries open, or working with our public works crews in Eversource together to clear trees and remove wires. And we had some streets that were blocked for five days, and no cars could pass in or out. And that's inappropriate, and that is on the Eversource's list of top, top, top priority. And we told them for five days, six days, seven days straight, we have this street over here. It's a small street, only five people, 10 people on the street. this street over here, it's a small street, only five people, 10 people on the street, but it needs to be cleared, we also have some ambulatory people on that street, and it didn't get done. So, we need some more control of the Eversource crews, we hammered that, they resisted that, they pushed that back, and we pushed a little harder, they are meeting with every single town that they serve, I think it's 150 some odd towns, 140 some odd towns, and that was our message, is, listen, you people are trying hard, but the disconnect is ridiculous, so, hopefully they'll learn from that. You also, you all received an invite from Sandy forwarded from the Samuel Smith House, they're having an event, and if it's not this Saturday, it's the following Saturday, have you guys, do you remember when it was? It's their end of the year, it's their harvest event, and they've asked that selectmen come out, and if it's just for a half hour, come out and enjoy the farm, but see the progress, and let those that are working really hard on this property to see that we are invested in it, and as town leaders, that we're out there seeing the property, supporting the property. So, check your inbox, it came from Sandy forwarded from the Samuel Smith House, and please come out and, you know, support them. On the last note, I glossed over the trees in front of Town Hall, our tree budget, we increased our tree budget from $35,000 to $50,000, that's decimated because of the storm, we did have to remove trees on our own, we're going to be looking for some funding, some of that I mentioned, we'd be bringing it up in my comments, some of this contingency money, we need to increase the tree budget, you'll get a request on that in the coming meetings. We have a lot of dead trees from that disease that went through town a couple years ago, as you know, our trees, the trees on our town-owned streets, some of them are our responsibility, some of them Eversource clears when it's near the power lines. We have a lot of work out there that needs to be done, we'll be coming back looking for some money for the trees, and I wanted to give you a heads up on that. That's my report, any questions on my report or anything that I may have missed? If not, I will go to public comment, anybody from the public like to speak? I removed two people from the public that I think were here for purposes of delegations, apologize for that. And maybe those people didn't know we had a police officer on the line here, so, you know, Mike, maybe we could chase those people down. I'd love to get a handle on who that may have been, I wonder if there's a way we can backtrack and find that out, and won't that be a nice surprise? If there's nobody from the public who wishes to speak, we have a select response, and then we can go to executive session.
I'll move into executive session for the purpose of discussing real estate matters at 8:28.
Seconded by Mrs. Hardy, any comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? Sandy, we'll get to the details tomorrow on what time we left executive session, everybody else, if you're not a selectman, we ask you to leave on your own.